Welcome everyone to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, December 14th. Again, this is a hybrid meeting. Members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, you can join us at the Norton Media Center at 184 West Main Street, or you can join online via video using the Zoom meeting link posted in the meeting agenda. Or if you prefer the Zoom app, that meeting ID for this hearing, or this, I should say, meeting is 638-929-1060. There is also a dial-in number available on the meeting agenda. This meeting can also be viewed on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. In addition, please feel to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting, or even during the meeting, to Paul D. Giuseppe, the Town Planner, seated to my right, whose email address is listed on the meeting agenda. Again, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Okay, get that out of the way, which I have almost memorized. You can go right ahead and start with our agenda this evening. Don't think we have anything in terms of Planning Board business and policies that we'll cover at this point. We do have a couple of bills, which I can pass down here to members in person to review if you would like. One is for a calendar, and one is for Horsey, Witten, for part of their peer review of the Blue Star project. So you can take a look at those if you so choose. Okay, there are also two sets of minutes that we have to approve here from both of our November meetings, November the 9th and November the 30th. Did everyone receive those when they were sent out by Brian? And did anybody have any edits that they wanted to ask question of or submit at this point?
I just have one small thing tonight. We refer to the tenant in the building as Vale rather than Yale Electric.
Okay.
It's Y-A-L-E rather than V-A-L.
Okay.
It's in two places in a minute.
Anything further from anybody here, or Steve and Kevin? I know you're joining us remotely. I see you both shaking your head. Okay, so we have one correction from Wayne on the meeting minutes of the 9th. Otherwise, if there's anything, unless there's anything further, I'd look for...
Motion to approve the correction.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that takes care of the meeting minutes of November the 9th. Were there any corrections, edits, updates that have not already been submitted to Paul and O'Brien?
Motion to approve the 11:30 meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the minutes of the 9th and the 30th are approved with the one edit to the minutes of the 9th. With that out of the way, we do have a few other things on our agenda this evening, starting with continuation of public hearing for a special permit, 11449, 11440, and 11451, 40 Leonard Street, also known as Blue Star Business Park Phase 2. If the applicant could come up and speak to any specific updates they'd like to fill us in on.
Good evening, Brandon Carr with the Food Engineering. Just to give you an update, since the last hearing, I think at the last hearing, we talked to Horsey and Witten, they had two or three lingering items on their peer review. We've since addressed them. We had a meeting last, I believe it was last Monday with Horsey and Witten, some of the department heads in town, and addressed any lingering concerns with water, building department, fire, all of the community. Horsey and Witten, I don't want to speak to them, but we responded to them the next day. They've since issued two letters in which, if you go through it, we've addressed all their comments. I think the only kind of lingering items in there are either related to the four waivers we requested, or they suggested some potential conditions of approval related to some of the construction hours, some of the plant, you know, things like that to the planning board. Additionally, since last meeting, we received approval from the Conservation Commission last night for the new intent for Phase 2 in Stormwater permit. So we're pretty much, we're wrapped up with them. They should be issuing that decision shortly and we'll record that. So other than that, the two or three items that were lingering with Horsey and Witten didn't really relate to any changes on the plan. One was to clarify one of the details for the outlook protection on the flare decks. There was a few missing from the charts. We just had to add those back to the chart. And then the other one was to add a lighting schedule to the lighting plant. So we had discussed that previously, but we just wanted to document it on the plans. And that was basically, I believe it was 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. from, first of all, time the plane had come in. So on days that the facility is operational, so weekdays, any weekend days that they work, the lighting would be full lighting if applicable, obviously if it's 3:00 in the afternoon, the lights aren't going to be on. But between the range from 5:30 to 7:00 at night, the full lighting schedule would be implemented anytime outside of those hours on those days, or on any days that holidays, Sundays, days the facility might not be open. It would be the reduced lighting schedule, especially in the areas closer to Janet Street. So the lights would be dimmed. They'd still be kept on for security and safety reasons, but dimmed overnight and on those non-important days. So those are the two kind of changes to any of the planning materials since your last meeting. Other than that, like I said, we worked through the conditions of approval with the Conservation Agent. There were no changes to any of the documents related to those. So what we presented at the last meeting, other than those two changes that I just mentioned, are still everything's heard. And I think Jeff has some items to follow discussions on.
Well, just to kind of summarize, just to reiterate where we've been at. It's been a long process. So we've been here. This is our sixth meeting. We've gone through three year reviews on the way through at a substantial cost. So that's been moving along, which is great with Northern Engineering. We've done the shadow study. We've done the sound study. We've modified the hours of construction related to that as well. We moved the compactors to the front of the building. We provided additional landscaping on the side, also additional sound walls. We promptly addressed everything with its way within Article 4, 4.6, and with third-party support. We've gone through that. We've included a fence to our butter, Mr. Curtin and his family. Again, we received conservation approval last night. We worked at DPW on snow plowing, the water department, the water system, looping the system connection to Janet, all the way down to Leonard Street. Worked with the fire department on hydrant locations, second means of access. And the building, as it's situated, is designed by right to industrial use, meets all the coverage standards, the setbacks, the building, night parking requirements for the use that's there. And we have a great tenant that really wants to be here at Norton. So it is Yale Alliance, and they're here to create jobs and taxes if they'd like to get going, ultimately assumes they can. So summary, again, it's been a long process, and we'd like to see if there's a way that we could get some closure.
Jeff, I know there was some discussion back and forth between yourself and Paul, and potentially Town Council about surety for the roadway, correct?
Correct.
Do you have anything you want to discuss about that at this point?
Well, we proposed that we build a $2 million surety, a bond that would be in place, and then 50% through construction, that would be reduced to a million. And then obviously on completion, then that would be 100% release. And just in addition to that, just so that we know, it's the way the construction process goes, and I'm sure you've all known, you've seen it, but we have bank inspector on site, we have our equity partner inspector on site. All the requisitions get approved, and we'll hold 5% retention on the subcontract. So the contractor comes in, all that is sitting inside. So we can't fund any of those projects until the progress of that work is done and completed, and inspected by those various third requirements. And that's not to mention Norton inspection that we have to deal with in the future as well. That's the financial inspection.
And just, you know, I emailed you all on this, and, you know, this is coming out right out of the Subdivision Control Act from the state that, as this is a definitive plan, it does, the statute does say that a definitive plan does trigger a form of guarantee. There were the four options that were laid out, and so we just needed to make sure that we're following state statute, and it's, you know, it's consistent too with our subdivision regulations as well. But that's what triggers this requirement. We don't have quite the flexibility that we might have with, if we're just a site plan. So, you know, we needed to make sure that, I needed to make sure that you were informed of that, that that's a, that the subdivision does have a requirement for a guarantee. There are four options.
Fair enough, there's the fact that you have four people who are not very pleasant watching over your shoulder the entire time.
There's a lot.
Yes.
Plus the recourse provisions that we have in place as well.
Yeah, and can we understand too, and obviously the things that Jeff's saying and the history, they've delivered on projects for Blue Star and Phase 1, and also come this way. It's just the statute was very explicit about that.
Right.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any specific questions for the applicant this time? Or otherwise, my next kind of order of business would be to just kind of bring Horsey and Witten under the line for their comments. But if you have any questions for the ConDyne or the Food Engineering, we can ask them now. Steve or Kevin, I'm still, can't migrate through the TV, so I'm just making sure that you're, I see some nods, some shaking heads, so.
I don't have any further comments, can I move it?
Okay. With that, Steve, I see you're here from Horsey and Witten. If you'd like to unmute yourself, and I know that Brandon gave some kind of overall comments in terms of how the back and forth with your team has gone. If you wanted to just add any additional color to that, or your perspective on anything that's outstanding?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, can.
Okay, just want to make sure there wasn't any feedback. Based on what they have submitted so far, they have addressed all of our comments for our new facility site in Stormwater Cityville. There are some outstanding items that we are referring to the planning board based on the site. Some of those were mentioned in our motion letter as potential conditions of approval. And then some of the items that we talked about last week, specifically with the applicant's request, all could be up for further discussion. We have included some of the major components in the most recent one, which I think the only discussion item we had was the shadow study. That's all.
Okay. Any members of the board have any comments for Horsey and Witten, or questions? Okay. Thank you, Steve, for the clarification on that. I see Mr. Curtin here. Do you have any questions that you'd like to come and ask of us based on anything you've heard tonight, or any overall comments?
Good evening, everyone. Oh, are you?
Why don't we just kind of go roughly where they were, so you can just kind of see us. And again, just your name, address, for the reference, even though you've been at each of the last few meetings, so.
You don't have your red socks on, can I?
I don't. No, it's in the lunch.
That's our room is one of our thought meetings, but that's okay. Basically, one of the first things I just wanted to ask about was regarding the shadow study. Somebody mentioned at the last meeting that when we all had reviewed it, that there was even, there wasn't much of a shadow, but in part of it, there was some shadow. One of the things I think that everybody needs to keep in mind is that shadow is kind of like a no-no, whether it's a shadow in my house, or four houses, or 20 houses, it doesn't matter. The building casts a shadow on it, it can't be there. They can't eliminate the shadow, the shadow is there. So that's something that is just by law that cannot be done. I know that there was some debate whether how much shadowing there was or wasn't. I have information that I've reviewed, and I've had other people review that show from multiple angles, that the shadow definitely is more apparent there at certain times of the year, more so than others. But I let there be no mistake about it. The point is, so that we can move on to some other things, there is a shadow, there's shadow on the property. Because of that fact, under the state law, which we'll go over in a minute, that's non-applicable, so that the building cannot be there because of the shadow. One of the things I need to go over, and I need, it's very, very important that the board, and every single member of the board hears this and understands this. And if somebody doesn't understand it, I'd be happy to answer any questions for clarity or anything else. Gone over it, but this for legal purposes has to be stated again. In accordance with Article IV Roman numeral Section 4.6, "Any use which would be harmful, detrimental, hazardous, offensive, or which would attempt to reduce property value in the district where it is located, by reason of excessive dust, dirt, glare, odor, fumes, smoke, refuse, noise, vibration, electric or electrical in advance, air or water pollution, danger of explosion, radiation, fire, or any other reason, is hereby prohibited, whether or not enumerated around the uses otherwise prohibited in any district." Okay? One thing that I need to show, and I want to add this is to basically the public forum here, is that there's two names that I added, that got added to the petition. One of them is the new neighbor at 98 Bird Street. She moved in, and she wasn't able to be here tonight. She's not able to drive, so she wanted to be added to this here. And the other one is, that's actually 89 Bird Street, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's right here. And it's the gentleman that, actually, he owns an animal kind of farm there, and it's kind of, it's set back, and it's, I believe it's next to 98, 96 Bird Street, if I'm not mistaken. And I spoke with him, and his name is on here. He has animals, and obviously noise, animals can hear noise a little bit different than people. And one of his concerns was that the noise for the animal farm that he has there, and something that he was very much against. So this has already been read, it doesn't need to be read again, but it's something that he added to it. And so this is a completion of what was said before. And even though this was done several meetings ago, let there be no mistake about it, this is extremely important, this is extremely valid, and it's something that is absolutely part of what we're talking about. So. "In accordance with Article IV Roman numeral Section 4.6, the Norton Planning Board is required by Massachusetts State Law to vote against the currently proposed position of Building Number 9, due to the fact that it would tend to reduce the property value of 7 Janet Street. The reason by which the proposed plan would tend to reduce the property value in the district where it would be located is by the reason of multiple factors, including but not limited to noise, excessive dust, excessive dirt, odor, fumes, smoke, and vibration." First one, the noise factor is something that we've talked about. It was an outstanding thing if they moved the compactors. Where the docks are located, there's going to be excessive noise that the noise, that some barriers are not able to completely contain. It is not upon either the town, or upon the applicant, in any way, shape, or form to determine what is going to be acceptable for the noise. It's very, very clear in the law that the excessive amount of the noise, and the amount of noise is not decided upon them, and it's something that's excessive based on the entire commercial park, not to mention the multiplicity of the amount of the loading docks that are here, and the excessive movement of the trucks that are there. The next thing is the excessive dirt, and the excessive dust and dirt, we've kind of categorized that all as one. The bottom line is that the location of where these loading docks are going to be, is that, first of all, I have pictures that I'm going to show. It's extreme, especially at this time of year, it's a good idea to show these pictures. I actually took these today. And it shows how extremely, extremely thin the tree line is, and how extremely clear, crystal clear, through the trees and through the branches, that everything can be seen. The pictures that the applicant submitted were from their side with the field, which had, when the leaves were there, it was probably the most prominent time of year, with the most leaves that were there. That's why it's a very good thing that I have the pictures that are here tonight, because it shows how extremely thin that they are. Even if and when trees are put in, which was something that I had pushed for, on their side, bottom line is it's going to take years for them to grow, and there's still going to be spaces. There's still going to be plenty of spaces that are there. So that's another thing. So when we talk about the fact of where it states specifically that it tends to reduce the property value, let's think about something. It doesn't say that absolutely positively, but it says that it would tend to. If any single member of the board, and the people that are here now or listening, would go to the house right now, and they would say, would you be tempted by it either before or after? That's a reasonable question. And if we would go to court on it, the judge and the jury have the ability to be asked the exact same question as anybody else would be, and that's exactly how it would be presented to them. The next thing to focus, oh, actually, so the thing about the dust and the dirt is that it's going to penetrate, the way that dust and dirt is, is that you can't, there are factors that are here that no matter what anybody wants to do, they're uncontrollable factors that apply specifically to 7 Janet Street that cannot be contained with any kind of a buffer, any kind of a fence, or any kind of a wall. The bottom line is that this article, this law protects 7 Janet Street, and that is the fact of the matter. Multiple factors, noise, excessive dust, and odor, fumes, and smoke. I'm going to try to, you know, kind of, first of all, these can be absolutely divided, okay? I'm going to tie these up to make it a little bit easier for everybody. I'd like to watch the grilling stage. The odor, the fumes, and the smoke, because again, and we talked about this that length, of where these loading docks are located, there is excessive fumes, there are odor, and there is smoke that's going to come out of them, that's going to be over an excessive amount of time, it's going to be a tremendous amount of it. It's going to, first of all, the trees right now are very, very thin, and even when the trees are there, smoke penetrates through trees, and it goes above the trees, and the closeness to the home, at one point as close as 170 feet, is absolutely close enough for our home to be absolutely affected by every single one of these factors, which are actually dividing to three based on the law. So I really don't need to get into that much further, but I could go into that honestly at length. And if that has to be done in a certain other way, then it will be. And the vibration factor, one question that I have here, because I really don't have many questions, because I honestly know exactly what I'm dealing with there. One question that I do have, and maybe you guys can be helpful in answering with this. The way that, you know, there are trucks and stuff that come down Janet Street right now, and even in our house right now, I talked to multiple neighbors about it. They said that they're happy to testify, write down whatever it is about it, that when you hear a truck, even UPS truck, whatever it is, you feel a vibration in the house. Again, these are not conditions that exist right now. The burden is not on 7 Janet Street to have these things. It is on the applicant to maintain things prior to how they are. It's not possible for all these things to be maintained. It's not possible for all these things to maintain. So the bottom line is that it can't be voted upon as is. They have to make adjustments to where the building is. You know, Jeff's come up here over and over, he's talked about how he's done this, he's done that. It doesn't change from now or from day one, the fact of the positioning where the building drastically affects 7 Janet Street. It doesn't matter if it's my house, or 45 houses, or 150 houses. The law applies, and it protects 7 Janet Street. Oh yeah, the last part of the vibration thing before I finish up here, is that, as far as I can understand, where 7 Janet Street is right now, and where ConDyne plans to have the building, the road where the fire hydrant is now, is that going to be a little bit of a road that's going to be, you know, concreted, that's going to connect? So on Technicality, 7 Janet Street, and then the road concrete will go into the end of the cul-de-sac? Is it going to be, it's going to be concrete where it's dirt right now? Is it going to be made concrete so that it's one seamless thing, one seamless road, even though it's going to be boarded up?
I can ask the applicant. I believe it was going to be crushed gravel, but I can ask.
Okay. Well, the bottom line is that the way that the, it's conducive to the fact that the vibration factor is absolutely going to be present with the vicinity closeness of, we'd be close to 170. And the vibration factor is something that, I'm not sure if there's going to be shocks that can be added in, or whatever it is, but it's a factor that is an uncontrollable factor, which absolutely exists, and it's something that the applicant cannot control. Due to these factors that I've stated, the Norton Planning Board is hereby prohibited from approving the currently proposed position of Building Number 9, as stated by the applicant ConDyne, as of December 4, 2021. Furthermore, if the Norton Planning Board were to vote for the currently proposed position of Building Number 9, not only would the town of Norton be in direct violation of Article 1V Roman numeral Section 4.6 of Massachusetts State Law, but any construction of proposed building, Building Number 9, would place ConDyne in direct violation of Article 1V Roman numeral Section 4.6 under Mass State Law, limited, but not limited to. The burden to maintain the entitlements by which this law states is solely on the applicant. It is Norton ConDyne, more than Norton Towning Board, to write by state law to dictate what they see fit as possible buffers or softeners, to essentially supersede the specific factors listed in this article. Furthermore, neither ConDyne Engineering or the Norton Planning Board have the legal authority to state by reason of opinion that the proposed position of Building Number 9 will not affect the value of 7 Janet Street. It is, however, based on reason of the reviewing of the overall proposed plan of Building Number 9, in more than reasonable position that as constituted, the building will reduce the property value of 7 Janet Street. Can I finish up here? I'm pretty much all set. I think that's pretty good right now. I think I've been pretty clear with some of the things that I've gone over here. Again, we've reached out to ConDyne in a way to make some compromises in some situations, and we'll have to, where that goes with is something that we'll have to look into a little bit. But I ask that this committee right now by no means does any kind of a vote on this tonight. I think that that would be very presumptuous based on the fact that there's still more that has to be done. Everything that I've gone over has to be addressed through a peer review. Things that they've gone over, that's good that they've gone over. It needs to be a process by which everything is addressed from A through Z, and then consistently until the end of the entire process. I appreciate every single person that's on the board, and I know how much time that this has taken. This is something that is an extremely sensitive matter. I appreciate every single one of you. And at the end of the day, as it was from the beginning, all that we ever wanted was fairness. And I think that at the end of the process, because of all of you, this can still end that way. But that's how this has to be done. This has to be done in a fair way. It can be done in a fair way, and that's what the current family is hoping that we do. That's the bottom line.
Brad, there was one question there, just about the surface of the connector between Janet Street and the fire access behind the building.
Yeah, that's a, it's going to be, it's a gravel surface. It's a reinforced gravel. No change, it's just, it's a regular pressure stone gravel, 18-foot wide, so I can curb this.
I just wanted to confirm that, because I know we had talked about it in terms of cover over the pipes behind the building.
Right. Yeah, yeah, right, the building, if it was in the parking lot, yeah.
And just a couple of comments in response to Mr. Curtin and 7 Janet. We've done a shadow study. And the shadow study that was there was based on clear cut of the trees, not one tree on the ground. So anything that was going to be there, we have 110-foot trees, 120-foot trees inside. So anything that was going to be there, we have 110 foot trees, 120 foot trees inside, we have 55 to 65 foot trees in the long range. That's where the shadow is coming and we were out there together probably three or four weeks ago, we both saw a shadow at 2:00 on Thursday and Friday afternoon. So the shadow is, is not being derived from the building that's 171 feet away, um, it is being derived through the tree line that's in place. Second of that, we've done the sound study and the sound that's being generated out there is from the Route 495, the highway. So that's where we're getting all the noise from that's being going on in that location. And the way the building is situated with the natural sound walls that are there, the actual building walls are concrete, they're just 12 inches thick, um, including the sound barrier walls that were coming in have really eliminated probably most of the sound that's there, even in the understanding. And then as it goes to the use, we're in industrial zone. This use that we're placing there is by right, by use, um, that, and meeting all the setbacks and standards. All those standards are met, setbacks, coverage, parking, everything else that's in.
I, I just, I had a couple of things that I just wanted to just get on the record and clarify, just, um, which, well, Mr. Curran said and some other things. Um, just to clarify, the section 4.6, I think everyone should, that's not a state law that he's quoting, that's a local bylaw, that's from your, your local bylaw. Um, I did a lot of research, I've done a lot of research in the past on shadows, there's no state law that prohibits a building can't shadow another property. If that was the case, you wouldn't see Boston. I, you know, I, that's not the only law on the books that I was able to find and asked a couple attorneys, um, the state of Massachusetts, is there's some restriction on buildings shadowing the Boston Common and some of the other historic parks in Boston. There's nothing that says under state law, as Mr. Curran stated, that one building can't shadow another property. Um, you know, we provided expert testimony, we provided studies, we provided responses, we provided plans, shadow studies, they've all been peer reviewed, they've been prepared by us, they've been peer reviewed by your town, by your town headquarters, by Horsey Whitten, um, other than the testimony, but, you know, he was, they haven't provided any expert testimony, any reports, any, um, I, I understand that, but I just wanted to just make sure this was, you know, this was on the record. As Jeff said, you know, everything we're proposing, we're not asking for any zoning relief, we meet all the setbacks, we meet the massing, obviously there's, um, provisions that the planning board has to look at, but just again, this is an allowed use, this is an allowed sized building in this district, we're meeting all setbacks, we're not asking for any variances, release, uh, relief on that, um, you know, noise, dust, shadow, visibility from 7 Janet, odor, fumes, smoke, vibration, we responded to all that in writing, in testimony at previous meetings, we provide mitigation for every one of those factors, that mitigation has been again reviewed by your town staff and Horsey Whitten, um, other than some, I believe some, you know, proposed conditions and, you know, the planning board's interpretation of the shadow study. You heard it tonight, that Horsey Whitten is, you know, in agreement with our design. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, point those things out because I think when some of the testimonies said, it, it comes a little unclear, but I just wanted to clear some of those things up and get them on the record, so.
And lastly, we want to end it with 7 Janet, so we want a build here, we want it built here, we want to own the building long term, we're going over it for Mr. Curran. It's our reputation, it's his reputation, we want to make sure that we all get it on the record.
Okay. Chad? Thank you both. I'll open it again to members of the board for questions or comments they have based on any of those discussions.
Let me ask Horsey Whitten to weigh in on that shadow study whether, uh, the back of the trees were included, just go over that one more time.
Sure, yeah, I think that, that was something that they covered in their letter, but Steve, if you wanted to just kind of restate that for the record, if you'd be so kind.
So, based on the shadow study that we were provided, it only looks at the building itself, does not look at those, uh, at existing tree line that is out there. Uh, what we came to the conclusion of based on that shadow study was that during the winter season, the building shadow covers the adjacent home of 7 Janet Street approximately 10% of the day, uh, in the winter, that's about an hour of the day, unidate tree impacts, um, during that winter tools that's there, shadow study, it not included the shadow adjacent to these two line of trees that are present, uh, that is covering that adjacent pocket during that time. So we can't comment on what's not on the shadow study, you're not on the extent of those existing trees, but based on what's being proposed, uh, that's what we found.
As with most things, you were just covering, whereas with the four corners of the page that you have in front of you.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and again, the comment that you were there was, uh, Horsey Whitten defers to the planning board for our discussion and review, which is basically, you've evaluated it and it's up to us to make any decisions, we will with that information.
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question now?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay. Steve, before you kind of sign off here, the only other thing I think that I saw in the letter was that, um, on the 17th, it said that you would be providing a separate letter to the planning board, um, regarding the wetlands impact, do we have that?
I do not believe that Horsey Whitten has submitted that here.
Okay.
We need to, I would need to check with, um, my colleague, James.
And, uh, no, but they're, and again, they, they went through conservation last night, uh, got approval, I've talked with the conservation director, there were no significant, or conditions added for it, it's met the state wetlands or wetland protection act.
Okay.
I think that might reference, there were, oh, six or seven comments in one of Horsey Whitten's, or whatever, these are a couple of one that, that related to wetlands and weather values, um, that we addressed with, uh, we responded to them in our last letter and, um, addressed them in the conversation. Are there any questions on, if anyone, if you have some?
Yeah, I think just, uh, going, going through the letters, obviously some of the points referenced, no further comment, and some of them say other things, so.
There weren't any other remaining wetland issues, uh, when, you know, when we met last week, I think everything had been, I think everyone was on the same page that the wetland issues were adequately addressed.
Okay. Uh, any else from members of the board? Steve or Kevin, uh, either of you have anything else at this time? Okay. Uh, Mr. Curran, I saw you had your hand up at one point, did you want to say anything further in conversation, like a question?
I just wanted to respond to, uh, the guys from Condyne had mentioned. One of the things that I wanted to mention here is, first of all, when Horsey and Whitten, they're the ones actually that also mentioned at the article, they mentioned that was something of a concern, so not that it was brought up by, um, the parent family, but it was also brought up by them as a possible thing, um, I think that that's a point to keep in mind. Uh, one thing here is, is that we talked about, uh, the shadow study and it's talking-
John, could you repeat, uh, you said Horsey was concerned about, I didn't-
Horsey, Whitten, there was a portion of one of the, um, the statements that they had before, that they actually had listed the article based on some of the concerns that had been brought up as a possible concern to Condyne based on how it is written, and it's very important for everybody to keep in mind.
In regards to the shadows specifically?
No, no, no.
No, they, they referenced, they referenced the article that John, that John's referencing in their site plan review letter, where they go through all of the applicable town articles and bylaws. I think that's what, am I following you correctly?
Do you?
Okay, okay, all right, I wanted to just make sure, I think it was in that, the site review, I'm trying to pull it up now, the site plan review, um, correspondence.
Exactly, exactly right, good. And then another thing too is, is that, we talked about the shadow study, I'll be very brief about this, but as we go through the process, like, and, and, and he's very good about it, but I've been around people that do an even better job of the work and with Boston Red Sox, okay? We, we, we're not making up things as we go along, we're not making up rules as we go along, yeah, we have to go by what is and what isn't, okay? And, and even the gentleman from Horsey and Whitten, I mentioned this tonight, he's basing the, the shadow study based on how it is going to look, well, that doesn't matter, it's matters exactly how it looks now, I don't know how it's going to look in five years from now, but all these trees are going to die, I don't know, whatever it is, this is not exactly how it works, okay? It doesn't work like that, it's based on what the conditions are now, how are these projections are going to be, that they might look like, what they're not going to look like. I have pictures that I have here on the computer that I like to show to the planning board that are, they're more applicable, more, uh, better pictures from what I had presented before and show how very, very thin these tree lines are and how, show how multiple factors because of that are present, uh, which we've gone over at, at Ozzy. Um, another thing too is, is that it was very, very interesting when the applicant came back and went, started to go over things, but didn't mention again, he didn't mention the excessive dust and dirt that he had mentioned about. Like I said, there's a laundry list of things that are listed in that article and again, I didn't just say that it was, um, uh, state law, I said it's part of one of the things that is located within the laws. We have that, there's multiple laws, they're applicable, this, this is just one of the laws that are there. The excessive dust and the dirt, I went over that and I didn't hear any reason, I didn't hear any explanation for how that's going to be dealt with. I didn't hear anything about that. Uh, if there is going to be excessive dirt, I already went over it tonight and, uh, if you very, very quickly, you know, seem to have passed by it, it's going to be excessive dust, it's going to be excessive dirt, it's going to land on my cars, I like to keep my cars nice and clean, I detail them, okay? Again, the burden is on the applicant. I have, when I clean my car as of right now, I have it nice and I have it clean, after this building is going to be put up, based on the projections that they are, based on the positioning and based on where the loading docks are going to be, the dust and the dirt is going to go through the trees, especially the way that they are right now, and it's going to list, and it's going to settle on my property, that's exactly part of what, only one little part of what this law protects, it protects me and my mother at this house. Smoke and odor, again, was another thing that the applicant did not just go over as I went over this. Again, with the loading docks that he has to, that Condyne has to have at this location, which for multiple people that have been in discussion, all of them should be at the front, which most of them are, these ones shouldn't even be here, and if they weren't here, this wouldn't even be an issue right now, and there's another reason why this has to be turned down because of the, you know, loading docks. If the loading docks weren't here, this is partly a different situation. Again, the, um, which we've talked about, you know, you can't supersede the article based on what Condyne's perspective of what buffers and softeners are. I, I hear you talk about things about that it's a commercial area right now, we've already talked about in the past, and the reason that it's a commercial area is because we're basically all tricked into thinking that it was going to be four small buildings and then because you have the ability to, or Condyne has the ability to, they decided that it was going to be a big building. Well, they might not think that that's, you know, that big of a deal, but it actually is a big deal because that's what we were told before and that's what everybody bases their decision on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Again, one of the things, and again, it's, you know, there's so many different parts of this, this is like, it's ridiculous. Does it tend to reduce the property value? Again, I'll go over this again, does the wording say, will it reduce the property value? Is it definitely going to, the wording says 10, okay? That's exactly what it says, 10. So if, again, if you want to have a room of people just think about this from a perspective, people that are on a jury and it's presented to them and you ask them the question, does this house right here, all pictures and nice how it is, and then you have a situation that's over here exactly how it is, does this building and all of these different things, all the different things associated, all the different things we've talked about here, does it tend to reduce the property value of this house? Okay? Now, I, I have the utmost confidence that every single member of the jury, and I have the utmost confidence in every single one of the members on the planning board that they're going to realize and understand the fact that that one thing that I'm talking about right there is absolutely applicable. I'm going to finish it up very, very briefly, again, I'm going to watch the Bruins games right now. The sound aspect that Condyne just talked about, and again, they said because of the fact that it's a, a, a commercial area, would be, you're being very, Condyne's being very, very presumptuous in terms of their, 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 uh, how they expect the noise to, uh, be, to, to, to happen. Because the bottom line is, is that it's not just from, uh, one of the trash compactors, it's from multiple trash compactors, it's from the parking area with the multiple cars that are going to be in the area that's going to be adjacent to the property that we live in. It's going to be the motion, I'm still going to, is even though that there's the, uh, the docks in the front, there's going to be excessive noise from the trucks in the front, we've got the multiplicity of all different trucks that are going to be in the front, even though that they move the compactors, the compactors are still in within a vicinity that they're still going to be able to be heard. What we're talking here is about amplification, we're talking about the amplification of all of the different factors. We're not just talking about one part of the baseball train, takes two to 10 of them, we're talking about all of the different parts of the sound. And again, this, it, it's not just the noise aspect, the noise aspect starts to float, float, float and it gets right back up to here again, which is where we're going to finish. Does it tend to reduce the property value? You bet your ass it does, it absolutely does, it never did. So I'm going to finish up right now, this is what the law is, I, I, my family has looked into it, we've reached out to Condyne, we hope that this, uh, can be happened in an appropriate way, but you bet your ass about it, the parent family knows what's going on.
Mr. Curran, you referenced photos, did you share those with Paul?
Absolutely.
You, you had not at this point, but you can.
Go ahead. Of course, I did.
Sure.
Just give it one sec, I might be awkward.
Sure, of course. Now, you mentioned it twice, so I wanted to make sure that we, um, we're able to see them, obviously, um, mid-December is pretty much, um, other than waiting till January is probably when the trees will be at their most bare, um, which does make sense when we're do, when we are considering screening and shadows and all of those things, so, um, I want to make sure that we do have the opportunity to, to look at those since you do have them available for us.
I made sure that I have COVID and everything like that, but I cleaned everything out real good, so, screen, all you have to do is, uh, just do, one, just touch on the screen so they're right and then it starts to get to something.
John, you want to join us on Zoom and perhaps show the entire board?
Um, I'm not sure how I actually can do that at the moment, but would it be, would it be okay possibly at the moment that I showed the board and then maybe after that, there's a way that if somebody helped me, I could download it so that it can be available for everyone?
Yeah, thanks.
I appreciate that. Is it okay if I, um, hold, uh, one for us?
Yeah, please.
Pretty much, I don't know why, just to see, um, this is just the first picture and basically what it is, it's the, you can see the, there's the trees right there and the spacing that's in between, that it's, um, you know, the trees that are there, it's not going to get too much thicker, um, the trees where they are are pretty much where they are, as of right now, it's, they're, if there's some trees behind it, uh, it's going to be based on, yeah, their length of time of growth and, uh, basically they actually do hold up all kinds of different factors, just one picture, that's the shadow we have on that side. Uh, again, majority of the pictures, that's what the house looks like, you know, this is, it's right here, part of the side of the house and that's just standing at the line, um, where the entry's actually are, so you can actually see, there's even, and you can see in between everything, it's almost like, you know? Again, that's one area that actually is completely and totally empty, that actually there's nothing that's there whatsoever, now that's actually just the entire view of more pictures here. Um, I don't have to go through that to everybody, it's, um, just kind of keep clicking as you go along, and then we'll get to the end if you just want to go back there. Okay. Is there any questions about any of them, I have to answer all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Curran.
Could I ask a little question?
Yeah, um, please.
These pictures where you're showing the gaps in the trees and everything, is this where the fence is going to be going, the eight foot fence?
That's where the fence is going to be, but there's a couple of, uh, issues regarding that. First of all, that the, the fence will only reach up to eight feet and clearly the bottom line is that there's space, the space between eight feet and the 40 plus feet is open space and we're not talking about, again, as I've said, and I'm not trying to hardline by anything, we've talked about buffering and we've talked about history examining, uh, based on what's applicable for the applicant. And fence is definitely something that's helpful, but by no means is it something that is a replacement, uh, if it shows a lot of coverage, it's supposed, it's not supposed to be any. And just the last aspect that I want to mention is the fact that shadowing is based on space and the space in between all those trees, we are not talking about a wall. If it was a flat, washed surface that was one full thing, then it would be something, the spaces in between create the shadows. So, anyway, if that's not taking in as a factor, then you're not getting the correct information. In a perfect situation, I think that the way that it's kind of- In a perfect situation, I think that the way that it's kind of being described by Condynes is that with the fence that we have, with the trees that they have, that there will be no shadow whatsoever, and that there will be no possibility of it. And that's just not the case, you know? We're not talking about whether, we're not talking about whether there'll be, you know, small mouth, big mouth, whatever it is. We're talking about that there is a shadow, and that's what basically matters. And is that proof is inside the photo there.
Thank you, Mr. Currie. I think you have your device back, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Currie, for sharing the photos.
Yep.
Again, if you could, I think the simplest thing is probably just to email those to Paul. And he did, we have a central platform where we look at everything related to the application. And all the attachments are accounted on list.
Okay.
So we can put it there, so everybody can, so all the members can refer to it if we need to.
Okay.
And obviously, to Brandon, I'll kind of, not to speak for you, but obviously, you've spoken about adding vegetation on the berm and things like that.
Yeah, I tried to reconnect my, I was actually gonna throw up a landscape plan to remind everybody, we are proposing a ten-to-twelve foot berm. So it's the eight-foot fence along the property line that we agreed to give, to put up along John Currie's property line. Then with the north side, after those trees, yes, there's gaps in those trees, I'm not arguing. Those trees are a solid wall. There's a ten-to-twelve foot berm with twenty to twenty-five foot plantings on top. Those will be evergreens tightly planted. Provided a landscape plan, again, once he goes, review the landscaping plan. Conservation review the landscaping plan. That'll provide a nice thick wall of vegetation. Yes, you might keep through once in a while, but that's gonna be a pretty, you know, those, that layering approach that I think one of the Butters was bringing up earlier on, further up GNS Street, you know, really trying to do that with the sound walls, with the fences, with, you know, the plantings on the berm, the berm, the existing trees, and then that fence. So, you know, we have, you know, fully mitigated for that. There's no requirement that this building has to be invisible from every angle of every, but we have provided mitigation for noise for all the items. We didn't address them tonight, we had a lengthy discussion, I think, the last meeting, point by point for every item in that bylaw. I was just looking at the November twenty-third letter that we responded with. Seventeen pages, eight or nine of them responded line by line for all those items, for sound, for dust, for odor. We have a construction dust, construction erosion control plan that's implemented. That's, again, been reviewed by the subconsultant, that's reviewed by Concom, that's reviewed by your building department. That's a state law template that would handle dust, you know, mitigate dust during post-construction. A paved surface, any of the landscape areas is, are stabilized through the grass. They're planted, they're natural vegetation. They're not typically dust generating. These tractor trailers aren't driving across fields, they're not driving across dirt parking lots. It's a paved parking lot with a stormwater system that's swept, that's maintained. We've moved the compactors away, we've provided sound walls for noise. We've addressed every item in that bylaw, we feel, to show that we're providing mitigation for all those factors.
Thank you.
So if you have any, you know, particular questions, I'll try to reconnect. If you want me to share any plans or anything else. But, you know, we feel like either in writing, in testimony, we've responded all these items.
Thank you, very comfortable. I'll ask if any members of the board have any questions they'd like to ask either of the applicant or?
Yeah, so Paul, I know, I know we kind of got a great summary from you of kind of, you know, exceptions, you know, what the permits were, waivers. So I know one of the bullets was about the noise, and if you had a chance to chat with the building commissioner or the health agent about any of their thoughts on that?
Yeah, I did. I spoke with Chris Sonner, the health agent, who's actually by law the enforcement of it. They're satisfied with the efforts that the applicant has made, and they don't believe that any condition is needed to address noise issues.
Okay.
Any other members of the board who have specific questions for the applicant at this time? Or anyone else that's here? Steve and/or Kevin, I'll throw to you one more time virtually, just to get a head nod from both of you. Just to make sure that, keeping things.
Well, sir, most of them, thank you.
I'm also, well.
Okay. Jeff and/or Brad, is there, given where things sit with Porzeliwood and everything else, there's specific action? If the board is prepared, are you prepared for us to close the public hearing at this time?
Yes.
Sure. Understanding that if we close the public hearing, to open it back up, we'd have to go through a whole bunch of noticing, et cetera, et cetera, which you're aware of, but I'm just making sure I'm restating it?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Of Jeff and Brandon, did you guys take a look at that, kind of, I guess there's a couple pages, Paul, and it had the conditions proposed through the review process? Did you guys look at those by any chance?
Was it a prepared list by Paul?
I didn't send it to them.
I think I've seen, you know, obviously, the Porzeliwood's recommendation.
Okay, yeah, and I think it basically just summarizes those?
Yeah, we didn't have any issues with the conditions proposed by Porzeliwood.
So, Jeff, sure, if I can, I do want to point out, there were a couple other waivers that we've added, you didn't apply for, but simple things like the scale.
Oh, yeah, scale and plan, and colors and stuff, yeah.
Right.
I think just thinking towards closing the public hearing, then, you know, dialogue about potential conditions or any tweaks, you know, becomes a super fine line, and I think we try to avoid that at all costs. So just making sure that everybody's kind of good with what's been documented to date, so that, you know, all of this documentation becomes part of, obviously, you know, the documentation at the end for the department. So, just want to make sure everybody's good with that before we're, if we were to close the hearing.
Yeah, sorry, see, I'll, as long as, you know, Paul didn't prove James, I didn't want to.
No, no, he didn't, he didn't, no.
He would, but I'm just saying.
No, it's literally just a summarized list, so it's things like, you know, stormwater pollution prevention report, you know, fourteen days prior to disturbance of the land, you know? Don't stockpile your snow in the infiltration bay since in the wetland. You know, it's all, there, yeah, there's no, no surprises by any stretch of the imagination.
There's no concern about it.
No. I'm not looking at it thinking like, oh my God, we've never discussed any of these things, but just double, triple checking, I guess.
Okay. So before we take any specific action in terms of, I want to try and get a feel for how the members are feeling in terms of, A, closing the public hearing, and/or submitting a decision. We can do one of the, none of those tonight, we can do one of those tonight, and work on conditions and/or a vote on approval or not an approval at a subsequent meeting. Or we can do all of that this evening, so. Obviously, this is a big project, we've been talking about it for, I mean, six hearings now. But, want to make sure that we're all on the same page with how we want to approach this.
Well, I guess I'll go first. I'm definitely comfortable closing the public hearing. I think we have enough information. Myself, I'm ready to vote. I think Paul's summary of like the permits, the waivers, the conditions is very good. My one comment, as Paul knows, was on the construction hours, which I think we've identified, kind of, you know, to Jeff's points, edits to that per, I'll admit, my request. And asked to double, you know, double look at that. So, me personally, I'd be ready to do both of those things.
I'm gonna agree with him. Same.
On the, on the, on the construction hours, if we could just get one, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, from Brandon or Jeff. For the construction hours, right, it was seven to five PM Monday through Saturday? Then, we had a note about when starting a daylight savings?
It was Monday through Saturday, seven AM to five PM, during daylight savings. Monday through Friday, six thirty to five, Saturday, seven to five.
Okay.
And then just the exclusion for a slab four, something that, you know.
Yeah, that's time sensitive.
Twenty-four hour, the guy, if he approves, you know, individually, I'm building.
Okay, so we've got that. Also, daylight savings starts March thirteenth. So we would just put that in there, just so if the order is, or the decision is specific to the date.
I'm not ready to think about spring, you know?
I'm still excited about winter.
Okay. Steve and Kevin, did you have any general thoughts or comments as to how you feel about proceeding or not proceeding with different aspects of this at this moment in time?
Tim, I'm with the other members, I'm fine with proceeding on both.
I agree as well, I'm fine with proceeding.
Okay. So just to confirm, if we choose to close the public hearing, that means we're not accepting any additional testimony or comments from the applicant, from pure viewer, from Butters?
Okay, I guess, depending on order, I would have to close, we would have to close the public, or I would have to make a motion, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I would have to make a motion to close each individual special permit number's public hearing. Is that correct, Paul? I know we've kind of been talking about them as a whole, but how do we make sure we, you know, follow the procedure?
You could, but I think you could, you could just do it, we have three applications. You could do the subdivision, the special permit, and the site plan.
Okay, is that, is that okay? All right, so then I'll move to close the public hearing for SP 11449, SP 11450, and SP 11451.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion by members of the board in regards to closing the public hearings? Okay. Hearing none, we will vote on closing the public hearing. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So the public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. Steve, Karen, sorry, I switched you there, I don't know why you changed the order in the Zoom. Okay. So now that we've closed the public hearings for those, again, we have a definitive subdivision plan, a special permit application, and a site plan application. We obviously have a number of proposed conditions and various, some from Paul, and some from Porzeliwood, with a number of different waivers.
Chair, do you have to suggest the correct order would be taking the definitive plan first?
Right, first, right, okay.
Okay.
Chair, I'll move to approve the definitive site plan.
Subdivision?
Subdivision plan.
And you're approving that contingent on conditions?
Yes, contingent on conditions.
Okay.
Second.
And, thank you, Alan, for the second, and we're agreeing that the conditions would be, we would finalize those at a subsequent meeting?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve with conditions the definitive subdivision plan for the zero Leonard Street? Okay. I'll go to the vote now. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. So that is, we're gonna approve with conditions for the definitive subdivision plan, the lot line on map. The next, if we were gonna go in sequence, the next item, Paul, probably the special permit, correct?
I would, I would go there, right?
Okay.
So we, first, there are four special permits, so we'll just start with the first one being a special permit for a building over ten thousand square feet, plenty of more parking spaces.
And it says both.
So moved approval, approval of special permit for a building over ten thousand square feet or twenty-five or more parking spaces.
Second.
And just to confirm, is that subject to conditions?
Yes, subject to the condition. Sorry, Tim, I'll get it at that this time.
Okay. And Wayne, does that second still stand?
Second.
Okay. Julie for the motion, Wayne for the second. Any further discussion on the special permit for a building over ten thousand square feet or twenty-five or more parking spaces? Okay. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. The next special permit, Paul, I'm gonna steal your thunder here. It would be for a special permit for the Water Resource Protection District.
Motion to approve the special permit for the Water Resource Protection District with conditions.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion for that special permit? Okay, hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Next one is the construction within the floodplain district.
Motion to approve the special permit for construction within the floodplain district with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And the final special permit application is for construction within the Wetland Protection District.
Motion to approve the special permit for Wetland, for construction of Wetland Protection District with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on this special permit? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. So that takes, that is the four special permit relief, relief items. The final item is the site plan. Again, this is the site plan for the building itself. Specifically, the relief is for a site plan for any building over two thousand five hundred square feet or ten parking spaces per Article fifteen, section three B.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the site plan for the building? I do see one hand up from the public hearing.
A site plan for each building? Doesn't have to be, because there are two applications for it, Paul, one for building nine, one for building twelve.
You had submitted them jointly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they were listed as two applications for it, as I just wanted to make sure.
Right, right.
Okay. So, for the berm, this is the site plan?
Yes.
For the entire site, for both buildings?
Correct.
Okay. So does the motion and the second still stand?
Yes, the motion still stands.
Just.
Okay. Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion from members of the board? Okay, on the motion to approve the site plan. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. I believe those are all the votes that we needed to take at this point. Paul, we have a list of waiver, list of waivers and submitted conditions, some from Porzalwood, and some of our standard, standard conditions that we include with all permits. Right. Our next meeting is on January 4th, January 4th?
Mm-hmm.
Which is in three weeks. Given the timing of the holidays upcoming, I think if we have any specific condition, I would ask any members of the board to review the conditions and waivers that Paul's put together here. If there are additional conditions that we want to add into a draft decision, please submit them to Paul sooner rather than later, so that we have time to, so that Paul has time to put them all into, into a document that makes sense, so that we can review it efficiently at our next meeting. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And I don't think there's any further discussion points on this project at this time.
Is this thing, is the voting, is the vote?
We, so in terms of the next steps of the process, the board will need to discuss conditions for this approval.
Well, it's a local argument, was it just one turn now?
They cannot start, we have not issued any kind of decision. We still need, we, we need to develop conditions for the project. Some of those we've covered, in terms of hours of construction and things like that, in terms of hours of operation, in terms of the lighting schedule, and all of those things.
So that'll be discussed?
That'll, that'll be discussed at a subsequent hearing. We're not going to be taking comments, so we're just taking, taking all of the comments that we've taken and formalizing those into conditions. We need to vote on those conditions and agree on them, and then we issue a decision. And then there's, and then there's opportunities to appeal either by, by, by any interested party, by the applicant, if they feel the conditions that we've set on, set down are not reasonable. There's still more things to go. Yes, Mr. Gray?
In terms of like, when the board discusses it, is it something that they can make adjustments based on all the, all the news that we have, all things that we discuss, is it possible they can, they could make determination based on, they have to make certain adjustments in the long term like that?
That could be a condition that we could require, yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Everybody else have any questions about the process or the timing regarding this project at this time? No? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. I know a couple people may be getting up to leave. Again, we do still have more agenda items on our meeting tonight. You're welcome to hear them. The next item after discussion is some discussion from the proponents.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
Everybody have a good year.
Sure. Next item after discussion is a discussion about the Route 123 and North and South Worcester Street intersection and signal improvements. Masthat is the project number here, and we do believe we have Justin here from Beta Engineering who's looking to kind of present some thoughts on this, thoughts and updates on this project at this time. Justin, I won't steal too much of your thunder, but you should have the ability to share your screen should you like, like through the Zoom meeting here. And if you try to, I'm not sure if Paul will get an agenda pop-up here, but we're good. Justin, you can go unmute and take it away.
Thank you very much. I don't have a formal presentation prepared, but more of a discussion. I'm happy to discuss and answer any questions that the board has. In terms of the project going forward, we have just recently submitted the 25% design submission to Masthat. It will be under their review, and we plan on hearing back comments from their, their review of this and looking towards a public hearing in the springtime. So the project is looking at the two inner, the two closely spaced intersections of North Worcester Street and South Worcester Street with West Main Street, Route 123, and the project goal here is to signalize the intersections under one traffic signal controller, meaning that the signals will, the two intersections will operate in tandem with one another and will operate separately where you'll have Route 123 traffic controlled, you'll have a separate phase for North Worcester Street, and a separate phase for South Worcester Street, along with pedestrian accommodations with push buttons and, and pedestrian signal heads.
Okay. I, I think we're looking to pull up the plan here on the, on the Zoom meeting for anybody who's joining remotely, but just to, from what I recall, the last time I saw this project, the redesign of the intersection had, was a bit of a rotary, correct?
There was discussions with Masthat about the rotary, but due to the significant impacts to Charlie Pond and the local businesses, the, the Charlie Plaza, and then also the newly acquired building on the northwest corner of the intersection.
That traffic.
The right of, the right-of-way impacts would have been too, too great for, for the roundabout to work, or the dual roundabouts to work there, so Masthat has gone ahead and chosen the, the design of a signal in coordination with, with Beta.
So this would just be a, just a straight traffic signal?
No, 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 because Justin, aren't you guys pulling in the intersection and adding like a safety, like an island, like, there's like significant, at least if I'm reading the plans right, you guys are definitely, so like, for lack of a better term, pull those edges in to create a more safer environment for both pets, but also the vehicle-moving traffic as well?
Yes, let me, I, I don't, again, like, like I said, I didn't have a formal presentation, but let me pull up the, the plan. I don't know if you have the plans in front of you, or I can pull them up on screen here and just show a quick, quick overview of the project.
Why don't, if you have it available, why don't you go for it? I think both myself and Paul have been trying to pull it up over the last couple minutes.
Dismounted.
Oh, you dismounted it.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay.
Yeah, see, there it is.
Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So just zooming out here, this is just our part of the plan set, but this is the easiest plan to probably understand what's going on here. So this is the, what we call the signed pavement marking plan, so really what the, what the final striping condition is going to be out there. So I'm just going to zoom in real quick and walk along the job. Here, as we're coming eastbound along 123, you'll come into the intersection. We are turning, if you notice here, this is the outline here. This is actually the edge of road that I'm outlining. So this is the portion of road, we're actually coming in and tightening the radius of this, of North Worcester Street to bring it in as more of a straight-on T-intersection as opposed to an intersection that just has a, has a great skew to it. Once you come through here, this intersection will be controlled by the signal, there'll be a stop bar that you'll stop back here, there'll be a set of signals for this, for this intersection, there'll be a set of signals again for this intersection, so you will have green signals to go through both of them, and conversely, the same will be in, in true for the, the westbound movement, where you'll have a set of signals here for this stop bar to the east of South Worcester Street, and then you'll have another set of signals on a mastarm just after the North Worcester Street. So essentially, our signals will go green for 123 in both the eastbound and westbound direction. They will then stop and turn red, you'll get a green indication for North Worcester Street, and you'll be able to continue completely through the intersection, and conversely, you'll be able to do the same thing from South Worcester Street, you'll be able to get a green indication and continue all the way through the intersection. These will be operating as what we call split phasing, which means that they will not go together. Each, each North Worcester Street and South Worcester Street approach will get their own green time, so there will be no conflicts with vehicles from either at, as, as today in the existing condition, they're under stop control, and they can go, there's a lot of crashes that were out there by conflicting vehicles from North Worcester Street taking a left, taking a left, and South Worcester Street taking a left. Here, we'll eliminate that problem and that conflict, and they'll be going by themselves. There's also this small little inset here, it's a little painted, painted median, this will all be pavement markings, this won't be a raised median, but it'll just channelize the traffic better at the intersection.
Okay. And just to confirm how we're reading this plan, in the plan, in the view that you're showing now, Charlie Pond is, for lack of a more direct term to the bottom of the land, correct?
Yes, Charlie Pond is right here.
Okay. And we still, and there's still enough width for two lanes of traffic on South Worcester Street entering the intersection, coming up?
Yes, so in this section, this is just a continuation of the other sheet, it will be one lane in each direction as you come north on South Worcester Street. Once we come into the intersection, we approach it, we'll widen out the northbound approach to accommodate a dedicated right turn lane to turns to 123 eastbound, and there still will be a, a travel lane in each direction.
Basically, marry the existing conditions in that respect.
Yeah, but just striped.
Correct. Yes, it, yes, currently, today, they, it formally, it acts as that, the left and right turn lane, but we will be actually formalizing it under these pavement markings.
Right.
And, and this project.
I am aware how unorganized this intersection is on a daily basis, so I...
Tim's a frequent user.
Yes. Okay. Did members of the board have any specific questions regarding this as of now? Obviously, as Justin said, they're at 25% now, and this is all things considered on the potential project pipeline for when, assuming that the world doesn't end again?
Currently, as of today, this is, it's programmed in the Universal Projects on the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP projects. It is not scheduled for funding as of yet. Once it does go through this 25% review, there'll be a scoring of this project, and that's when, you know, they'll start to, to look at when they could program this in, but as of right now, there's no funding for this project, it's just in their Universal Projects.
Understood, thank you. So, is there a timetable for this? So the timeline of 25% review would be?
Yes, so the timeline right now is that it's been submitted, generally, it takes about 90 days for Masthat to review the, the project, get us their comments, we'll have a, what they call a comment resolution meeting, which is where the town, Masthat, and Beta will sit in a room, discuss the comments that they found, and square away any outstanding issues before it goes to public hearing. And most of that will be right-of-way comments, any kind of right-of, right-of-way issues that are seen, and from that, once those comments are addressed and incorporated, that's when the right-of-way process, the design public hearing process will begin, and that, as of right now, is scheduled for early spring of next year.
So Justin, that little median, is that just like, that's just striped, or is that like a raised median?
I think it's a striped.
That's just striped, yeah.
Striped, okay.
Just pavement markings.
Okay.
That's to help accommodate truck turns.
Yes.
And also formalize traffic, and shift people over with the left turn lane to shift them into the through lanes.
This could design to keep people from doing what they do at the intersection now?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, like sitting out there. I think my only, my only other comment is, while I'm a huge fan of adding in the bike pavement markings, it is really leading you to nowhere, unfortunately, that there isn't really any other bike pavement markings in that area, so I would just make sure that we're not kind of directing anybody into like a no man's land, thinking about what the right-of-way, you know, looks like. I know once you kind of get past South Worcester, it's really just like the sidewalk in a small shoulder, although I know that is definitely the way we want to head in the right direction with, with the bicycle markings, I'm just slightly worried about the lack of additional bike sharrows in the general area.
Yes, yeah, and that's, that comes to Masthat's helping transportation program where they look to accommodate all users.
Yep.
So the idea here is that, you know, this will be built, they try to accommodate all the users, as in putting these bike lanes in here, and as projects develop to the east and west of this project along 123, the bike lanes and bike accommodations will be, and pedestrian accommodations will be added and kind of continued on. So that's, that's their, their goal here is to put something into place for these projects as we build along. In the future, that's when they can be connected to.
And it's just...
But I, I, I understand your, and, and, you know, I know your comment.
Yeah, no, no, I, I know you get it, don't worry. I, I work with Beta all the time. The other, the other comment is as you go past South Worcester and the shallow for the bike is there with the arrow, is that striping above it just like to denote the bike lane? That's not like a barrier-protected bike lane, is it?
This is, so, no, there, this is, again, this is paint similar to this median island here, median island. This is, it's just what they call a buffered bike lane.
Yep.
It just gives that, the two extra feet of protection from the vehicles.
Okay, all right. Wasn't sure if that was going to have, you know, like, not, not followers, that's not what I'm thinking.
I don't think we're ready for that.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the, no, it will not, it's just a painted median.
Yeah, okay. Well, sometimes it's just, it's, it's by code, you have to. So, okay.
Mr. Jay, this is Kevin, I just have one concern, and it has to do with the entrance and exit into the Solomon East School, and my concern is going west before you get to the intersection, the queue of cars at that first light backing up and blocking the roadway into the school. I don't know if anything has been discussed around that, Justin, both blocking it for exiting and for entering, you know, at that queue, at that light?
We have had conversations and meetings with Masthat, the superintendent of schools, and the town about this, this very issue here. I know there's discussions on the town looking to, you know, re, redevelop or redesign that parking lot for the Solomon East School, and that's something that we've had conversations as of right now. We're, we're discussing with Masthat to see what we can do as far as, can we put in like a do not block the box to provide access to and from that school, and how we could try to alter circulation patterns within the school with buses and drop off and employees to help kind of mitigate, mitigate the, you know, the queue at the intersection and try to, you know, not block that intersection. But conversations have been, and coordination has been ongoing, so that will be part of the, the project going forward. It's just still in the early phases of it, but that is something that is noted and is ongoing right now.
Very good, thank you.
Kevin, you're thinking cars queuing up from, coming from the Alabro side, correct?
No, coming from the, the center of town, going towards Alabro, yeah.
That might even be like, Justin, thinking about what the timing blocks look like, and if you edit those blocks like during, you know, like the release of that school, you know, to free flow traffic on 123, maybe the light is a little bit longer during those times, just depending on what the traffic, you know, generation count looks like.
Yeah, and, and that's something that we will take into account during the, with the analysis, and then also looking at coordination with Masthat on if we did do something along the lines, do not block the box, has it, has it time restricted for the hours of the school?
Yep.
Where that, that driveway does not need to be, that driveway could be blocked. Where that, that driveway does not need to be, uh, that driveway could be blocked during off-peak hours or during the middle of night. It's not necessary to keep that do-not-block-the-box intact. But that's something that we are, we are coordinating with Mastha and the town on.
Okay.
Justin, is there gonna be any reconfiguration of the parking lot where Michelle's Corner Store is? Like, they're, are they, they're gonna gain, you're gonna gain property on that side by teeing up Northwestern?
Uh, so i- in this case, there, we're just, but we're just widening the intersection here.
Okay.
This is all, this is all state right-of-way in here, so there will be no addition of their parking. We are taking three spaces from their parking lot here, uh, and kind of reconfiguring this opening. Uh, but we are putting back three space, we're, we're taking up the three spaces, realigning them here. They will lose a slight bit of parking, but they will have a better opening and, and channelization to their parking lot, uh, under this project.
It is one in and one out, those two, those two openings?
So, this opening will accommodate, it's right turn in, right turn out. So, this, this opening will accommodate right turns. Um, it will also accommodate throughs, uh, from Southwestern Street. Uh, and then exiting the parking lot, it'll be right turn only. So, you'll only be able to get out of the, the parking lot.
Okay.
Uh, and turn right.
There's no opening onto Northwestern now, right, Paul?
There is, there is.
There is.
Okay.
There is, then we'll be maintaining that open.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of what's the easiest, like, you know, in my mind funnel, how do we funnel the traffic to the safest spot in the intersection?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, so they're...
I only know the one in the front that's always asking if there's one to go to Northwestern. Okay.
Yeah, so they're gonna go around a little bit, but...
Okay, yeah.
So, there's no left turn from that shopping center, uh, to 123, to 123, right?
I said, yeah, essentially, that, that left turn will not be allowed here. Um, and again, that's to, to save the conflict with other vehicles.
You can't be having that.
The wide-open nature, but they will be able to take a left onto Northwestern Street and take the left through the signal.
Exactly. I mean, we wanna funnel them to the signal as much as possible.
Yes.
And make those openings, you know, the geometry so that nobody's hopefully jumping the curb and taking a left.
I think that there will probably be a significant number of people to do that.
Well, I mean, the signage has gotta be really good once we get it all, like, in place, you know?
Yeah.
Like, no left turn here, you know? Okay, all right, so that's good.
Okay. And, uh, this, I guess this would be for Justin or for you, Paul, in terms of, um, are you looking for the board to take any specific action on this presentation this time? Or just informational?
Justin, I think that's really in your shop.
I, I, again, I think this is meant for more informational. Um, this, this is really just to notify the town that we've submitted the 25% design, um, that this is in the Mastha TIP of, uh, the Universal Projects, and that, you know, this, this is going forward. Um, but one thing that I mentioned is that we are, we're under contract, Beta Group is, uh, for the design public hearing. From then on, uh, there is no, uh, agreement with us. We'd like to, you know, work with, with the town to set up something and to take this to the final design. Uh, but that's, that's what our contract is under to the design public hearing. At that point, there will be, you know, there'll, there'll be needs to discuss more with the town uh, once that hearing comes into, into play. But right now, this is more just for informational purposes only.
Thank you. I want to make sure you didn't get us to endorse or anything like that, so...
Not at this time, nope.
Okay.
Well, Paul, I mean, you know, I think, you know, this board, previous boards, I mean, that's like such an incredibly important safety improvement.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, from crash data alone, I would hope that Mastha, you know, looks at that element and others to hopefully rank this as a high project to get it programmed in the TIP.
Well, you know how those DOTs are?
I know, I do, very well.
You expect miracles to...
I know.
Yeah, I drive this every day.
Good. Yeah.
It scares me, driving through that.
So, you, wait, so you know. Yeah. It's, it's...
Yeah.
It's not a safe spot, for sure, so...
My first day in Norton, I closed my eyes and went through that intersection and I couldn't see. Because I was driving a U-Haul truck, and I couldn't see out the passenger window coming up to Alborro. I just had to, I didn't see any headlights, and I just had to go.
Just work for it.
Because, yeah. Um, okay. Unless anybody else has anything else further for, uh, Justin, I'll, we can let him go and, uh, move on to the final item on our agenda this evening.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Yep. Okay. Uh, the final item on our agenda, uh, feels like we just finished Fall Town Meeting.
I know, we're back at it already.
And Spring Town Meeting is coming around the corner. Uh, we have a notification from the town manager from last week that the Spring Town Meeting will be on Tuesday, June 7th, at the North High School. Uh, Lauren Idicles, our placeholder language, correct?
Yeah.
Is due to the Select Board, Select Board on March 7th. So, we have four meetings.
Yeah.
To have placeholder language in place for anything that we want to get on the Spring Town Annual Town Meeting Agenda. Paul, I know you had a couple of things that have been on your, there are things that we should be discussing in relation to Spring Town Meeting?
Yeah, I, there were a few things that are obviously out with the, with the passage of the master plan and our, our local rapid recovery plan for West Main Street. There are a few things that we could start doing next year that could, you know, help promote the implementation of those plans. And I spoke into Mike Units, our town manager, about this, and, uh, you know, they're hopeful that, you know, we would put, you know, historically speaking, we have typically put zoning bylaw changes in the Fall Town Meeting. But, you know, recently, we've done some zoning in springtime. Uh, and I ran this by him, and he seemed to be okay with this, that, you know, if we want to keep it lighter on the, on the Spring Town Meeting, I think there's a, a good impactful change that we could do that comes right out of both of those plans, and that is updating our use table with a particular focus on economic development to add categories. For example, there were specific recommendations for uses to be added out of our local rapid recovery plan for West Main Street, like artisan uses, art galleries, things like that, that our plan doesn't, doesn't specifically identify. And the challenge with that is if we, by law, if our plan, if, if someone comes to us, I'll give you an example. Someone approached me this, you know, a few months ago, had an idea to do a wedding event, uh, at, on a property they owned. We looked, Nick and I looked, building commissioner and I looked all through the use code. We could find nothing that came close to event planning and confirmed with town council, if you can't make that connection, you can't allow a use. So, that is just an example of, our code misses a lot of things. So, we, you know, we had recommendations in our local rapid recovery plan for specific uses we should add. The master plan also made some recommendations for other types of economic development, you know, focusing on life sciences and, uh, tech industries. Just to make, just this, you know, just to identify those uses as whether they're allowable as a right or, uh, by special permit and what categories we wouldn't want them allowing. So, it's not a heavy lift, I don't think. Uh, I think there, but there are bigger things we would want to do down the road uh, to promote economic development in certain sites. And thinking in terms of overlay, overlay district, things like that, that we could apply specific standards and, and, and as incentives to try to promote, you know, let's say if we, if we do want to go forward with life sciences, there are, there are communities that have zoning districts or overlay districts specifically for that. But for simplicity's sake, we should get some uses added to the table. But I would just suggest keep it focused on economic development and, and, and really focus on uses that we would want to see applied in any of our commercial categories. So, I know I brought out wedding. I don't think I wanna, would wanna touch that because that starts getting into residential areas and, and I don't know that we'd want wedding facilities in industrial areas or any of our commercial either. So, anyway, that's just one. And then thinking longer term for, for, um, maybe the Fall Town Meeting, unless you all tell me to not do it or move it, uh, move it up into spring. One of the things we, we could do is, um, extend Village Center Core or something like it. Because you know, it only goes up to the high school, but it, the sewer line though was, is all the way to the housing authority. And I really want to take advantage of the sewer line being there with the capacity it has and what it could allow for more intensive development that we should be directing if we're going to get a little bit more development. Let's put it in an area where we have the capacity to do it, particularly sewer driving it. So, we'd want to look at whether we just simply extend Village Center Core, you know, those parcels to the housing authority or come up with something else.
How's the response been to Village Commercial Core, Paul? From anybody who's come in and talked to you guys, like, has it gotten, I guess, like, a good gut reaction?
Yeah, from the couple of projects that, we've had some initial discussions with, with people.
Yeah.
Um, it moved these properties sold because of the sewer and because it was rezoned to this. So, until we, you know, see it in action with a site plan, we'll, we'll see how...
Had that point, but...
That's the test, but...
Yeah.
It opened the door for a couple of projects to come in. They're just, you know, they're smaller projects and we're waiting to see, but, um, you know, we're hoping more will happen. Uh, but as you know, it takes time.
Yeah.
And this area is, is it quite ripe for redevelopment? It's getting there.
And it just went final with the Attorney General after like a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Feels like it was approved forever ago.
I know.
It wasn't official until...
It was a year ago.
Yeah.
Right in October, and then, you know?
I feel like we put a lot of really good work into that. Like, yeah, I definitely would be up for considering, like, extending it.
Yeah, I, I think it would be, I think it would be wise for us to, to consider it.
Yeah.
Uh, I think there's more opportunities west of this area too. So, we'll see. There is also, I've had discussions with Chris Keats, who is helping, you know, Chris participates quite a bit. Uh, Chris has been helping the town with the rail trail. And I think he's mentioned to the board to the opportunities for commercial development that supports the rail trail. And so, we had a discussion about rezoning, uh, where East Main Street, where the Village Commercial line ends on East Main Street, and potentially rezoning it all the way down to 495. Or, that's the think big, or we just potentially extend it to the area immediately around where the rail trail is. Village Commercial actually goes right up to the rail trail, but it doesn't go over, uh, on the east side and then, and then on the others. I'm sorry, it doesn't go onto the north side of the parcels. I'll have to show this to you on a map, but we would just want to think about that because the idea is if we can open that, some of those parcels up for, for commercial development, you might see things, uses like, um, smoothie bars and...
Yeah, don't steal my ice cream shop idea, Paul. But I know what you're saying.
We said ice cream would be perfect.
I know, it would be.
Because with the rail trail, this is the only area where it could cross a commercial area in town.
Yeah.
Because it, this, the rail trail really goes through residential areas. I wouldn't be, I don't think I would be suggesting those areas get rezoned or, you know, to promote retail. But there are a lot of examples in the country where you get good retail right out of, out of rail trail area, or rail. East Bay hiking bike trail is a great example.
Oh, yeah.
You know, down in Riverside and East Providence, there's a wonderful coffee bar there. So, we want to look at that too, and of course, working with you all to figure that out. And then finally, there's one that, uh, it's going to be handed down to us by the state. As part of last year, the state's Housing Choice Initiative, they put in a requirement for towns that are within the MBTA service area, and we're one of them, that we have to adopt zoning that would allow a minimum of 15 units an acre to allow, you know, for, for residential. And, and this was partly to promote different housing types, but it was also there to promote ridership for the T, which I know, okay, Norton, how does that happen? But we are required, it's definite, we're, you know, we're brought up in the statute or in the, the interim rule, and we're applicable to it. There are pretty severe penalties if we don't do it. We wouldn't be eligible to apply for housing works grant, which is one of them. The Housing Choice funding, which is now available to help communities purchase or promote affordable housing. So, um, we are waiting for them to give us final guidance. They had an interim rule, and all it basically said was gotta be at least 15 units an acre. That's it. We'll come back with final guidance. Uh, they told, the, the state has now said they will be coming back out to the communities in the winter, uh, and then we will figure out what that, you know, they'll help, we'll help them figure out, I guess, what that looks like. But, um, when I hear 15 units an acre, again, I keep thinking that's gotta be in an area where we have sewer. Uh, you can't, you wouldn't want to do 15 units an acre on septic.
Septic? I don't even know if you could do that.
I don't know that you could. It would be a...
Like, with lot sizes and stuff?
It'd be huge. But, you know, I'm hoping there'll be some flexibility to maybe do an overlay, and maybe we look at Mansfield Ave, where the sewer runs from the shopping center back up to the, uh, Mansfield Town Line. I, I wouldn't want to rezone all of that commercial land. Again, we have very little commercial land in town. Uh, but some other areas in town where we have sewer are in low-density residential areas, and this isn't it. So, that would, to me, would be an incompatible thing. I'd be more cautious about this down on West Main where the Village Center is because we're trying to promote more retail there. So, anyway, um, we're going to have to do this unless the legislature changes its mind. But this isn't, you know, a you-will-do, and there is a big, you know, big stick waiting if we don't.
Is there a timeline for the you-will-do by insert date here?
There was, and we're concerned about it because there's no way we're getting this at Spring Town Meeting. Not if we want to do it right. So, if they came out in January and said, here's the final rule, go, go forth and get it done by July, you know, we're not going to. So, we're, that's one of the things a bunch of communities are going to be appealing to the state to say, "Look, give us time because we're not gonna get this at our Spring Town Meeting."
Well, and MBTA's ridership's not through the roof, so...
No, no. And it's, and it rolled out, they never contacted us. Most of the communities that I've spoken with, no one ever heard about, heard from anyone that this was even coming. And it's like, we rolled this out, and there are other ways they, you know, again, I don't clearly understand what the objective was because they haven't reached out to us. But this would have been, if the purpose, if part of the purpose was to promote the T, then if there were opportunity, there were options, they could have done with communities that had the T in it, T stops in it. And they do, but then they lump a group like us and other communities that are nearby and treat us like we're, you have a T stop in it, which, you know, even if we build, if we have the 240Bs going up on West Main Street, so why not bring them into a district? But, you know, how many of those people, once those projects are built, are going to drive to Mansfield?
Does that matter though, Paul? Do we need to be worried about that?
No, but my point is, is I don't know why this got tied in with MBTA communities.
No, I get you, yeah.
I just don't see us having a tremendous impact on it. But if they're, we're told to do it, we're gonna have to do it, we'll do it right.
Is there a percentage of land that we have to do?
They have to tell us that. They say an area sizable enough, which means...
So, there's no gap?
What does that mean?
I don't know.
It's not like you need 10% of the total town?
They haven't, so, that's gonna have to be part of the, the discussion, so... We will all keep, I will keep you informed this evening. I just want to think, if we go, if we do decide to go a use table in, uh, Spring Town Meeting, do we want to convene a subcommittee like we did a couple of years ago?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. Like, I mean, I, I know Alan and I were, were on it. I mean, I'll speak for me, but I, I felt like that worked really well.
Yeah.
Because we got to, I think, hammer out, out a lot of... Because we got to, I think, hammer out a lot of thoughts before we came to the
Absolutely.
the larger board. So I personally thought it worked really well, Alan. I don't, how do you feel?
I agree.
So I mean, I would certainly propose that we do that again and even maybe that smaller group, I don't know, Paul, you know, when Alan was on it before, he was on ZBA, so it was great to have that, like, other, like, view, you know, coming from the other side.
Yeah, I can, I can see, we can check and see if a ZBA member will, would like to, I mean, I think that would be a good idea to continue. I mean, when Alan was, he brought great perspective from ZBAs. I mean, you could again, but I feel like it would be, I think they were happy having, when you were here with them, working on the subcommittee. We could certainly propose it to the ZBA and see if they'd be willing to send somebody.
I almost think it's like one meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, last time.
I think it's, here's all the list of things we're thinking of adding.
Twice, three times? Yeah, I mean, it wasn't long that we met, and we did the whole Village Core commercial in those three meetings.
Yeah, that was a lot more expensive than this.
No, exactly.
I think this is, here are all the things you want to add. Throw up a draft of where you think it belongs and then present that recommendation to the board.
Yeah. We can start getting going on that, then.
I mean, what does everybody think about VCC? Like, should we, should we think about doing that for spring, Paul, or is that just too much?
Mike's, Mike's response to me was, well, if, if you don't, if there's not a timing issue with it.
Don't rush it.
Probably not.
Okay. Fair enough.
I think there's more for a use. I think the use table sets us up for some later things.
Sounds good. All right, I'm game. I'm in, if you guys want me to be on the subcommittee again.
I think that would be great.
I think that's a, I think that's a self-nomination, so thank you very much.
No, I will. Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll do it.
I don't think we need to officially vote on that, but it sounds.
Anyone else?
Alan, you're going to come with me.
Alan, and then, Eddie.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the ZBA.
Can we do this on Zoom, Paul?
If we had a third planning board member in this week forum, so.
Yeah.
Didn't we want to have a date for one?
I think that will be something that, once they reach out to ZBA, we'll lock that down. I'm not going to worry about a date on it now.
Okay.
But maybe we would potentially look for a recommendation on it in the first meeting in February, or sometime in January.
Yeah, that's fine.
Something like that, Paul. Can you, like, have meeting members in the public involved, too, like Chris Keys, for example?
Well, he's out of, he's in California for about three, four months. He's not back till April. He could zoom in. Sadly, he does that.
Yeah, I mean, like, I mean, last time, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I mean, we met, obviously, in a public place, but we.
It's a workshop.
Did we post it? Yeah, I was going to say.
It was posted. It was posted in video, yeah. That was a public meeting. It was a.
Did we have an agenda for it?
They have to look back.
I think, I think Alan's right. I do think we taped it.
We did.
Okay. All right, look back, Paul, and find out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it.
Because we were, we were in the Select Board room. It is you, me, right, Scott, and four.
No, we're in the planning room.
No, we did it in chambers, didn't we?
We did it in chambers at least once, but there were four of us.
Yeah, and we could, we could do a hybrid or virtual, however you all want to do it.
But time flies, I think. Sometime in January, presented February. Deadline for more articles is the 7th of March, so time is.
With a strict focus on economic development.
Yeah.
I think, I think Paul is going to, Paul has a list from the master plan and some other sessions.
Yeah, then I've been doing some research.
We're not working with a blank slate, so.
No, no. And we can limit it as much as we want, but I've done some research into some other codes, too.
My two cents would be, I think, stay away from that wedding one with a 10-foot pole because.
Yeah.
I don't want to try and figure out where to fit 200 cars.
I don't want to go there.
I really don't. There's, there's nothing I want to think about less, about where to fit 200 cars.
In a residential area?
Yeah, there's nothing I want to think about less than that.
No, no, we're just trying to.
Yeah, we're good on that.
Focus, you know, again, we're trying to focus our more intensive growth in, on the corridors. That's, and that's, you know, we would need to be thinking about that, too, because obviously, these areas are the most appropriate because they would, you know, hopefully have the least impact on neighborhoods and trying to create, you know, some areas of town, like Village Center, we're trying to create more people-oriented places. And then when you get over to, you know, where Blue Star is and, you know, potentially where the Mast Dot property is, that's more, much more about, you know, I hate to say what it is about, you know, those are bigger developments, much bigger, right? Those are some, those are our largest buildings over there.
Yeah.
The property tax per each of those buildings is much bigger than any one individual or 10 buildings, probably, on West Main Street. So, so we have to just after all of that. Well, this is great. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we have anything else further in terms of planning board business and policies, correct, Paul? I kind of lumped that in together, planning board business and policies.
I just have one quick question. So when we're doing the meetings, we had, for the last April meeting, we wanted to wait till we found out when the spring meeting was.
Oh.
And so we have the 12th and the, what was it? 12th and 26th as options.
And April?
Of April, yes. And I'm told from Lee from library that we'd have to be at the media center for the 12th, that that's.
Do we have it on the 26th already?
I think there was a tentative because we weren't sure what was happening with the Spring Town Meeting, but now it's in June, which seems late.
It does seem late, yeah.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday meeting.
So.
So we need to.
So we can't schedule some, for June, for.
Oh, yeah. No, I think, I think that we're good for now, and because the, oh, it was the election we were waiting for, it was not the town meeting, it was the election.
Oh, right. I don't think that's been announced yet, has it?
I was just going to say, is that, is that on the town website at all? Because she, no, she did. I think, I think she did because you can pull papers on the 4th of January, so I bet you there's a date.
It was on Facebook.
Yeah, I think there's a date, Paul.
Okay, we'll be look.
That's what we were waiting for, for the April meeting.
Yeah, my mistake, I had written down.
No, that's okay, because you know Brian.
When you said it, I thought it was right, and then I went, wait a second.
But it's always good to back out from Spring Town Meeting, too, to make sure that we've got plenty of time to go over if we have the article.
I know it was on Facebook.
Let's see, I'm not sure how it's.
Town election, April 30th.
Okay.
Okay, so then technically, we could definitely get two meetings in in April with the existing board.
Yeah.
Leave them as is?
So we'll just get the 26th scheduled.
Yeah, I see. Just leave it alone. And then we'll probably need to schedule at least one or two May meetings prior to any new members coming on board, just because of how that timing will work. We're going to do that right now.
And April 5th, and are we doing 12th? Is that what you said?
Oh, we're.
Well, yeah, we had the 5th, and then there was the option to have the second one, either be the 12th or that's the 26th.
In case we have to hurry up.
Yeah.
So we're going to move the 12th.
So do we?
How do we deal with the 12th and the 26th? Any preferences?
No, I mean, that's fine.
Well, either or.
12th is back-to-back, then. We have back-to-back meetings.
Yes.
Back-to-back, so move the 12th to the 26th?
Yeah, we'll go to, do the 5th and the 26th.
Okay.
Now, we, now we have more vacation. We've passed that.
That was the, we could do the 18th, right?
Right. And then if we continue to, like, from the 26th, then the first meeting in May could be the 10th, which gives at least a week, once everybody's elected, you get like a week and, you know, a day, a couple of days before you have the first meeting with a new board.
Everybody's swearing and do stuff?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
That way, at least you got a week instead of asking people to turn it around in 48 hours.
Yeah, okay. So maybe in February or March, whenever, we need to set meetings from April, we can set a couple of them without going too crazy, without having our full board lined up for those meetings.
Well, we got the April election, right, so.
Yeah.
Just go up, right?
Yeah, well, we'd have something scheduled by before then, so, yeah.
Okay.
I have, when you're ready, not much of an update on that vacancy.
That's okay.
So, yeah, the, I did confirm that after Scott submitted his letter, the clerk did forward the vacancy, making it a public announcement. The Select Board did acknowledge it, took action, but looking on the website, I don't see it listed, so I will ask that they post the vacancy up here. I put it on the planning board website that there's a vacancy, but, you know, obviously, there's not a whole lot of time for this meeting position, but I guess it could be a test run for seeing if a person wants to, you know, then go for the April election.
Yeah. Okay. What's the other open, there's one other open slot, right?
Open slot.
There's two board positions coming open, I believe.
No, three, three. This is a year for three. So it's myself, Kevin, and Would Have Been Scott.
Okay. Good, you know.
Yeah, it's three. This is the three year.
I just knew it wasn't me.
No, you and Steve are, good.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything for the meeting this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you, Julie and Wayne. Any further discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.